You're listening to WFRLP, Franklin on 102.9 FM. And anywhere, anytime at W F P R dot FM. Thanks for being with us.
Hello, this is Frank Falvey with Frank's Music. I'm at home and in the studio is Jim Derrick.
Good afternoon, Frank. Today we have a show that, thank you for letting me pick up the subject. I know we both share a love for many of these musicians we're going to talk about today, but we're going to focus on the Troubadour of West Hollywood, California, which is a nightclub that was opened back in 1957, Frank, and it was inspired by a cafe in London, England called the Troubadour. And a gentleman by the name of Doug Weston had traveled over to London, been enamored by the cafe, and opened what he envisioned as a coffee house in West Hollywood. And the Troubadour has an incredible history of launching and locating and launching new artists in their careers. And we're going to take a journey through many of these artists that came across the stage, particularly focused on the late 60s and early 70s. The Troubadour, Frank, was instrumental in the folk revival and launched so many great, great artists. What is a Troubadour, by the way, Frank? What is the definition of a Troubadour?
Well, the old definition of the Troubadour in London, probably. The Troubadour is one of the classic lyric poets and poetic musicians, often of knightly rank, in the 11th to 13th century. And the female word is T R O B A I R T Z, troubadour. So there's a male, the Troubadour is a male, and then there's a female word. My definition-
We're live.
Yes, you outside?
Yes.
Time being seven o'clock. I call the May 26th, 2022 meeting of the Franklin Town Council to order. Please pause for a moment of silence. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All citizens are now welcome to attend public board and committee meetings in person. Meetings are live streamed by Franklin TV and shown on Comcast Channel 11 and Verizon Channel 29. In an effort to maximize citizen engagement opportunities, citizens will be able to continue to participate remotely via phone, or you may click the Zoom link that's on the posted agenda and on the town website. The phone number is 929-205-6099. And the Zoom ID is 868-8494-8996. And then you need to hit the pound sign. Once again, the Zoom ID is 868-8494-8996. Okay. Next item on the agenda, citizens' comments. Citizens are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes on a matter that is not on the agenda. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during citizens' comments. The town council will give remarks appropriate consideration and may ask the town administrator to review the matter. Is there anyone in the council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone out in Zoom land that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda?
It's mostly just me.
Nothing.
It's mostly just-
It's just us.
It is.
It's just us. Everybody's seen enough of us after last night. So, okay, seeing none, we will move on. And I will declare the second public hearing open for the FY '23 Annual Operating Budget Hearing. So, we did get through every line item last night. And unless, I will look to the council. If there are any questions that you didn't get answered last night, you can certainly ask it now. We did, I gave everybody an opportunity if they wanted somebody to come back. We would ask them. Nobody was looking for further information. So therefore, we just have a few in our audience who just love to be here and wanted to spend the second night in a row with us. There was a question last night regarding the cultural council and some funds associated with that. And we had done a little investigating today and found, and Jamie certainly correct me if I misspeak here, but we did find that the cultural council sitting right now has $64,000 in their coffers that is grant money that can be used. All of it could be used to fund the event if they so chose. As well, we were notified this afternoon that Senator Roush was able to get $10,000, a minimum of $10,000, towards the cultural event. So, at least from where I sit, I think the funds certainly appear to be there for them to be able to cover that, certainly cover that event as we sit here tonight. Jamie, anything to add?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, so just a couple of additional details. That was a great overview. So the choices for those that are looking to do the festival, so the $10,000 earmark, just for, you know, public knowledge, is in the Senate budget as of today. There'll be a conference committee, and they deliver the governor a budget by July 1st. And then, assuming that they get that done on time, Councilor Frangello may have a better idea than I do, but in all seriousness, you know, one hiccup with the earmark certainly could be that the festival is so early in September, whenever the budget gets done. But we do appreciate Senator Roush's effort for that. I know she attended last year, when I talked to her earlier this few weeks ago. You know, it seemed like something she was very interested in, and so we're very grateful for that, for those monies. Just so folks know, then I've got to work with the state agency to get that money. And different state agencies do different things. Sometimes they want us to reimburse them, and sometimes they wire us the $10,000. So it may pay for costs for the festival. And Councilor Cormier-Ledger, we know more than me as being someone who helped out organize it last year. You know, I don't know if they pay all the bills after or in advance. I know sometimes there's different bills for different things, deposits. So that's just one funding piece that certainly can assist. It'll be a tight timeline. And depending on what restrictions, if any, the state puts on it, you know, may determine that too. But it'll be a close call, but I'm sure it can be used for something. Second, the treasurer collector and comptroller sent me an email earlier. The balance in their accounts is $64,286.73. Some of that funds, I don't believe there's any outstanding POs, but some of those funds may be already kind of, at least conceptually allocated. But I think we heard last night the cost was roughly around $30,000 for the festival. And then, if those options aren't suffice for whatever reasons, the only other option, in kind of talking to some staff today, I think the choice that's least advantageous is plucking $15,000 or $30,000 from other budgets. My preference, if the council has to go that direction, is just to increase local receipts estimates by $15,000, add the expenditure to that line item for $15,000. And then, as we go through the fiscal year, as we always do, we monitor revenues every month. And so, if for some reason there was, the revenues were not coming in as projected through the summer, which obviously we're not hoping for, then when we do the budget amendment in November, we could reduce it back if for some reason there was, you know, a problem with that. So those are really the three options. I think those are great options. I think, I hope the Jermaine point that's getting across is there's certainly some funding available for the cultural council to have their immensely successful cultural festival in September. So happy to answer any questions, obviously, of those choices.
Questions? Councilor Frangello.
Can you speak to outstanding receipts? It's my understanding that there's quite a bit of outstanding invoices and expenses to be paid, so the number's certainly not zero, but substantially lower than 64. That's my understanding, but I don't know if you happen to have.
I think the cultural council committee would have to at least talk to somebody in our finance team to let them know what's outstanding. I don't, I just, I don't know that personally.
And there are none in our office to be taken care of, correct?
No, that I'm aware of.
That you're aware of.
Carrie, is there like a timeframe where they usually come to you for, to drop off? Is it a monthly? Do you just want to get up and-
It depends, oh, sorry.
Like, just do they come in? I know you talk to them on a monthly basis. I thought maybe it might be helpful for the council to know, you know, how that normally goes.
Hi, Carrie Bertoni, treasurer collector, through you, Chairman. So I work with them quite a bit, especially before a big event. They come to me, they tell me when the event is. I help them prepare vouchers to pay. There's certain expenses that they need the check in hand the day of the event or the day before, because these are people that, you know, can't invoice. So I am not aware of any expenses that haven't been paid. Their last event was at the high school, and I helped Kay actually get the check for Birchwood and make sure all the meals were paid on Friday. So I'm not aware of any that we haven't been submitted to be paid.
It's my sense that grants only, like when they give out grants, they don't actually give the money until it's used by them. And they just gave out a round of like 20, 25,000 grants.
Okay, okay.
Thirty-two. Do you know, is that true?
I haven't seen that come in. Is that a, do you know if they wire the funds to the town? Or do they send-
No, with permission to speak, of course.
Yeah, I don't know why I'm talking. You know that stuff.
No, it's okay. I mean, every fall, the, you know, people have to submit a grant application to the cultural council for, you know, to get money. But they have to spend it first, and then the cultural council. Like, they get approved for the money, it's like a grant, but then they have to go do the activity and spend it. Then they turn their receipts in, and then the town, through the funds, reimburses them. So we, as a town, have allotted $32,000 in grants for the next cycle. So the 64 is a little misleading, because that's really half that. Assuming all of the artists that have been allotted a grant, you know, fulfill their obligation and, you know, do the activity and then seek reimbursement. So there are no receipts, to my knowledge, outstanding for last year's festival, if that was also a question. So it's not like there's bills out there that haven't been paid. But the grant piece is very important, because we have to keep that money, because it's been awarded, right? So we have to almost pretend like it's not there, right? She does, you know, Kay and the team does have some other discretionary money to use toward the festival, but not 64.
Just one other point I'd like to make. So the budget, the $15,000 for the fiscal year '23 is not in there. And the, also, the money from the state, the matching, is not in there. It's not in the account, because we have, that'll be received in the fall.
Yep.
So, that's just another. The $25,000.
So I guess what I'm hearing, and, you know, the way I personally would look at this, okay, you know, we want the event to go on, we want to support that event. If the funds are needed to, when the time comes, we can deal with it. But by the same token, right now, it just appears like there's sufficient funds to deal with the festival. When we get to the fall and we take another, we look at round two, what we call round two of the budget, FY '23 budget, we can certainly make adjustments at that point if we need to, to deal with these issues. Because I don't think there's anybody sitting here that doesn't want that event to go on. And does not believe that we should support it.
If I may, I guess I would be, I guess I'm less tied to the event and more the event was evidence that, given larger room to breathe, they have, they could produce a larger turn on investments to the town, and maybe it's time to stop nickel and diming our cultural expenses in town. That would be my only response. It's less about the viability of this one event and more about, can we be giving more than $15,000 a year to our-
And I guess to respond to that, I believe that what you're hearing is there is support to do that from the council. The way to do that, the way to make that happen is to be involved early on, as we build the budget for the calendar year, which starts in the fall of every year, and get their requests in to the town administrator. And from there, we start to build the budget, go through the budget subcommittees, and go through, and we can allocate more money if we so choose to do so. But there's a process. And right now, we're beyond the starting point. So we're trying to catch up a little bit. And I guess what I'm saying is if we need, if the money is needed, we will have the opportunity to help that when we get to fall.
Thank you.
Counselors.
And to support Councilor Cormier-Ledger, I know those grants, like when we get one for the Save Coalition, it's almost like, okay, we got a $50,000 grant. Now you're running around trying to spend it. You know what I mean, because you have to spend it, you know, on your behalf. So I know how hard that is, because you get it handed to you, and now you're like, okay, what do we do? Let's have a road race, let's have this, let's have that, because you have to spend it. So I know how hard that is, too. So that's, you know, you gotta, it has to cope. You can't keep, which you could, but you can't.
And that's a great point, Counselor Delacoll. I think what, the smart thing to do, the prudent thing to do here now is to leave status quo. Let Jamie talk to the cultural council and talk through some of this. Make sure they understand the process. As well, let's proceed, as we proceed, to the events that they have planned going forward. See what those needs are. And if it's needed to come back to us, they can come back to us and deal with it at that point. Counselor Chandler.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Just for all my people at home, I just want to make sure I got the math right. So $64,000 is in the account right now.
Thirty-two of which is-
Right, yeah, okay, I was going to get, okay. So 64 plus Senator Roush's money would be 74. Minus-
Plus 15.
Plus 15, so 70, 89, 89,000 minus 30.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, which equals-
Roush's money isn't in the House bill. So that's like a 50/50 at this point.
Well, she kind of announced it. I don't think she would, I would pretty much, you wouldn't announce it if she wasn't going to be able to-
It's in the Senate side, it's not on the House side, so it's-
Okay, all right.
I don't think we should count on that.
Okay, so now my math is off. Could you, minus 10,000 from that?
Fifty-seven.
So there's $57,000 there after everything.
That we know of, right?
Right. And I just have a hard time, because I don't believe, if any other committee came to us and said, oh, we have $57,000, but we want more, what would we say to them? That's what I'm getting at. I don't know. Like, if the Fourth of July Committee came and they had $70,000, but no, we want money for the fireworks, I don't think we would give it to them.
I think we need a better understanding from the cultural council as to what their needs are and what their plans are moving forward. And I think what I'd like to do is direct Jamie, Jamie-
Yeah.
-to meet with the cultural council and try and get a better understanding as to what it is, and then we can go forward from there. Is everybody comfortable with that? Go ahead.
That's great. I'd say, if we go that route, I hope that we, as a council, really do stand in support if they come to us with needs and continue to examine opportunities in future budgets to increase our arts and culture spending.
And I think, I do believe that the support for the arts is here.
Absolutely.
I think we all do that, all agree with that. And as well, I think, you know, we've made, we've made great strides developing the cultural district. And a lot of work went into getting that done. These, last year, the last fall's event was just a wonderful event for the community. So I think the support's there. But I also think that there needs to be a little bit better understanding as to what the roles from the cultural council and how they approach to come before us to request. Counselor Jones.
Just a quick comment, Mr. Chairman. I completely agree with you in regards to the efforts that the community has been making as far as the arts and the culture is concerned. It's, there's just so much to offer, and that event was great. I agree, you know, with what's been said. Counselor Chandler, you're right with the numbers. It would be tough if somebody like the Fourth of July Committee came to us and said, hey, you know, we have this much money, but we want so much more, so we can do X, Y, and Z. It's always nice to know what those budget items are so that we ourselves can judge whether or not we want to, you know, have a favorable donation to something like that. I agree with the counselor, with the chairman, that we kind of hold off and wait and hear more from Kay and the group. And we wait to the fall to get a budget, better number. We can always re, we can always go back and look at things. This isn't in stone as of today. So I completely agree with the chairman. The only thing I wish for is that they add a second lobster truck, because that line was awful.
I think that was Counselor Cormier-Ledger's issue.
It was definitely one of. I was the food, one of the food truck guys.
Any other questions? Jamie, did you have something you want to add?
No, I just, the only quick thing is, and it was reiterated last night, and I just, I'd emphasize it for the record one more time. I just don't want folks to feel unhappy or that there's some sort of loss here. I think that really, and Mr. Chairman, a lot of us have talked about this. Clearly, the arts and culture sector is a huge economic development and cultural opportunity for this community. It's an opportunity, we have to all do a better job working together to make it better. It just, it's a huge opportunity. Our studies show that. It's a fact. There's a lot of money lost. I think the cultural numbers I hadn't heard of last night of the economic impact is just one little sample size. And just, I think, you know, I'm trying again to give a minor rallying cry to all the folks in the community that work on these issues to really, you know, in the next several months, come together and really take what Mr. Bobbitt said, which, there were three excellent recommendations. I support all three. We can't do all three in an Amazon two-day prime scenario. But they're clearly the three things that are supportive. The strategic planning element, it has to be there. People have to work together. An arts director is something that I am more than open to. I like the idea. I think it's a big deal. Lily Rivera, part of her job was intended to do this. She did this in Worcester and Framingham. She's an incredible talent we have that is still a hugely untapped resource. And I just think that Counselor Frangillo's question at that forum was the bullseye. And I think that, I'm hoping that all of the various stakeholders in the community can come together, because I think that the investment that we're talking about is clearly there. We're all going to support it. And we're chintzing around the edges even with $15,000, to be honest with you. Just to throw it in there, it still feels cheap. There's a much bigger investment that we can make even beyond that. And so I just want to give folks the hope that we all have and as the administration has, that there's still really great stuff that we can do together. So, thank you.
Without question. Thank you, Jamie. Any other counselors? Anyone in the audience? Name and address, please.
Steve.
Very well done.
Very well done.
This is a service organization. Steve Sherlock, Ten Lawrence Drive, recording for Franklin News, Franklin TV, Franklin Radio. Just to share the, I'm uncomfortable with a piece of the discussion to the extent that last night, this room was full of all department heads and the council chair, cultural council chair, cultural district chair, and the other, those two specifically, they weren't here. They may not have been involved. And you're speculating about accounts, which truly are valid, because I trust the process, but they may be encumbered, and we don't know, because they do. And I'm just uncomfortable with that. I appreciate the change and the conversation. Clearly, the discussion, as one who is clearly arts and culture-based, fostering, et cetera, I appreciate that effort. And just that one other piece that perhaps bring them into the discussion, give them a chance earlier. I know you mentioned on this specific point, for next year's budget, give them an opportunity to come up here so that you're not speculating, you're not spending 10 minutes about $15,000 when I know you've got some other things to do, and you had a late night last night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you for looking out for us, too. I appreciate that.
Is there anyone else in council chambers that has a question on the cultural council? Is there anyone out in Zoom land?
No, we got people.
I'm not seeing anybody. Okay, I'm going to go back one last time. Is there any questions from any counselor on any line item on the budget before I close?
Did you want me to read the document again? Did you want me to read the document again?
No.
No.
It's not tied. No other questions. Is there any questions in the council chambers? Is there anyone out in Zoom land that has a question? Okay, seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. The second public hearing closed. Moving on, license transactions. We have a one this evening. La Quintina Winery Farmer, Winery Farmer's Market License. Clerk will read the licensed transaction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a licensed transaction for Mr. Robert Vazella, La Quintina Winery, 355 Union Street. This is a request for Farmer Winery Farmer's Market License to allow samples and sale of bottled wine at the Franklin Farmers Pursuit in Chapter 138, Subsection 15F. This is a motion to approve the issuance of a Farmer Winery Farmer's Market License to Robert Vazella of La Quintina Winery Company.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie?
My recommendation is to vote yes.
I know Mr. Vazella is out there in Zoom land, so if anybody does have any questions, is there any counselor that has any questions? Counselor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is through the chair to Mr. Vazella. You have, you have a brewery as well? Is this just for the wine, or will you have samples of your beer, too? Can't do that.
This is just for the wine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Is there any other counselor? Counselor Chandler?
Just quickly, I saw Mr. Vazella had to get a transporter license in our paperwork.
Yeah.
I, is, how much are you allowed to transport, then? They put a limit on you? Because I know, through you to Mr., Attorney Sorel, please.
Mark?
So basically, every aspect of handling alcohol is overseen by the AVCC, including transportation, storage. They have to all be accounted for, you have to have permission to do, to do it. So for him to just transport when he needs to sell at the farmer's market, he's required to have that license.
Okay, so there's no, in that, there's no, he could bring fifty cases up there or a thousand cases? That, that was my question. I didn't know if there was a limit on, with that license, what he could transport.
I don't know offhand. I think there's a copy of the license here. I didn't pay much attention to it.
It doesn't have to be answered right now, it's just, I saw that, that they made him get a license just for that. I was just wondering what.
If there was a quantity.
Yeah, if there was a quantity, like.
Maybe you can get a straight answer at some point.
Just if he was restricted, like if he could only bring ten cases or.
So, just to chime in if I could, Mr. Counselor. So as, as a part of a farmer winery, I am allowed to self-distribute, you know, which means, you know, the Rome Restaurant carries my wine. In order for me to self-distribute, I also need a salesman permit. So in order to have a salesman permit, I also need to have a transportation permit. So the permit was not necessarily for the farmer's market, but to my knowledge, I don't necessarily have a, a limit on how much I can transport. If I could bring a thousand cases up to the market and sell that all on a Friday between the hours of two and six, then I'd be a pretty happy man, but I think, you know, on average, we're just carrying only about four or five cases at a time.
So you haven't bought the tractor trailer yet?
Yeah, not yet.
There's no restriction on it, it's just a matter of whatever the capacity of the vehicle is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Is there any other questions from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve a farmer winery, farmer's market license to Robert Vazella, La Quintina Winery Company. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. I appreciate the support.
June third, first, farmer's market.
And he'll be at the festival.
Don't blame your bet, Counselor.
Not at all.
Okay, moving on, legislation for action. Resolution, uh, resolution twenty-two dash thirty-one, departmental FY twenty-three expenditure limits. Town Code, Chapter seventy-three, Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E, one and two. And a half. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution twenty-two thirty-one, expenditure limits for FY, for fiscal year 2023. On departmental revolving funds established by Franklin Town Code, Chapter seventy-three, as provided by Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four. Subsection fifty-three and a half is amended, whereas the Franklin Town Council has adopted a bylaw establishing a chapter of the Franklin Town Code. Chapter seventy-three, Departmental Revolving Funds, is provided in Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Subsection fifty-three and a half, as amended by Chapter two eighteen of the Legislative Acts of two thousand sixteen, and whereas Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Subsection fifty-three E and a half, as amended, further provides that the municipality's legislative body shall annually set the expenditure limit for each revolving fund established under local bylaw. Now therefore be moved and voted that the Franklin Town Council hereby sets the expenditure limit for each revolving fund established under Franklin Town Code, Chapter seventy-three, Departmental Revolving Funds, for fiscal year 2023 as follows. Section five point one, Senior Center Respite Program, thirty thousand dollars. Section five point two, Senior Citizen Activities Program, one hundred thousand dollars. Section five point three, Senior Center Supportive Day Program, one hundred thousand dollars. Section five point four, Use of Facilities Account, one hundred thousand dollars. Section five point five, Prior Departmental Rescue Training Program, ten thousand dollars. And section five point six, Community Policy Programs, twenty-five thousand dollars, as provided by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four. Section, subsection fifty-three and a half is amended. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home and Charter.
Move Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-one.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a routine required statutory, or statutory vote to set the expenditure limits and the types of revolving accounts. There's nothing new here. This is the same list of revolving accounts that's been in the budget for several years now. I think the last one we put on was five point six, maybe about four or five years ago.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-one. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-two, Salary Schedule, Full-Time Elected Official Town Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to continue Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-two to June eighth meeting.
Thirty-one, ah, yeah, thirty-two.
She needs to work at a certain time, at a specified time, at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Second. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion, uh, because we're continuing, it's just a majority vote, correct? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-three, Adoption of the FY twenty-three Budget. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution twenty-two thirty-three, Adoption of the Fiscal Year 2023 Budget, whereas the Town Council conducted two public hearings on the Fiscal Year 2023 Budget on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, and May twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-two, after due notice was given in the Milford Daily News, and whereas the Finance Committee issued printed recommendations with copies made available at each public hearing, and whereas the Town Council considered a fiscal year 2023 budget on a departmental basis and by vote, so determined the size of the appropriations to each department on May twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-two. Now, therefore be moved and voted to adopt said general fund budget, water enterprise fund budget, senior sewer enterprise fund budget, solid waste enterprise fund budget, as voted on May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, with a total appropriation of one hundred forty-two million, three hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred eighty-six dollars, of which, one hundred twenty-eight million, three hundred sixty thousand and thirty-two dollars is to be raised and appropriated in the balance transferred from the enterprise fund revenues to be appropriated as follows. Water fees, enterprise fund, six million, four hundred sixty thousand, two hundred eighty-two. Sewer fees, enterprise fund, five million and four thousand dollars, four thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. Solid waste fees, two million, five hundred sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four. Total enterprise fund, fourteen million, thirty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-five. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home and Charter, with the Finance Committee Action Meeting on May twelfth of twenty-two, twenty-two, with a unanimous vote of eight-zero to recommend one hundred and forty-two million, three hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Move Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-three.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. I think about five hours worth is sufficient amount of discussion.
We did good, everyone.
Open it back up.
Is there any, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none.
Mark, go ahead.
Typically, I have not been involved in the budget process over the years, so I don't want to toe a hand grenade here, but this, the language of this references that you have already taken a vote to adopt the budget, which is the budget document that you read. So my recommendation would be to first take a vote, having had all the holes and all that, take a vote, take a vote to approve that document and then vote this, which references that vote.
So two votes.
Two votes.
Two votes.
Would that be a separate resolution?
For purpose, it's in the record, just, you know, track the language here, just voting the budget document.
Right, voting this first, and then we're voting this, okay.
That's actually the line-by-line stuff. This is just the funding.
Yep.
Okay.
He has to pull back his first motion. Yep.
You withdraw your motion.
Withdraw.
I would like to withdraw my motion, a Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-three.
I'll withdraw my second.
Perfect. Mr. Chairman, per the Town Attorney's recommendation, I would like to make a motion to vote the Town of Franklin Operating Budget Fiscal Year twenty, twenty-three voting document as described last night according to the Fiscal Year twenty-three Fincom recommendations.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to move Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-three.
Second.
And it's actually an adoption of the twenty-three, FY twenty-three budget.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? The vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-three. Majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Town Administrators Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I'm sure everybody will mention, but I hope everybody has a wonderful Memorial Day weekend. And just a quick plug, the Memorial Day Parade is back. For the first time ever, the town is picking up this parade, as many communities do. Shannon and the Veterans Council have done an incredible job putting this back together, and I hope everybody can join us at ten-thirty Monday morning with a speaking ceremony at noon on the Town Common. Look forward to seeing everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay. Let's see, next item is Counselor Comments. We won't have any new business tonight, so we'll deal with Counselor Comments. Counselor Correa Ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly want to wish everyone a safe and happy Memorial Day and thank all of our veterans out there for their service, especially remembering all those who made the ultimate sacrifice. Congratulations to the Franklin Food Pantry. A few of us were able to go to their ribbon cutting last week for their new facility. We're excited to see that, and that'll be a wonderful treasure for, for everyone when that's able to happen. We've heard it mentioned, but certainly congratulations to the Cultural District and the Cultural Council on a very successful first-ever Metro West Arts Symposium last week. I got to go, Kobe got to go. We had a really great time. Michael Bobbitt gave a great speech as the keynote, and just the engaging sessions with the volunteers were really impactful. I hope we're able to do that again. And just finally, congrats to all Franklin graduates at the high school, at the vocational technical school, at private schools. If you're coming home from college, you overcame gigantic obstacles to get to this point. You and your family should be proud. I hope you go do great things. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Correa Ledger. Counselor Chandler?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I echo a lot of what Counselor Correa said about Veteran Memorial Day, and I want to thank everyone for all their hard work with this budget process. It's over, everybody did a great job. And lastly, I'm definitely becoming a new person right now. I have, this might, through you, might have to go to Julie. I'm gonna have to change my phone number now. My thirty-year answering machine finally broke, so I cannot use my five-two-eight-two-three-one-two number anymore. It's gone. I don't even think you can buy one anymore. So for the record, it'll be five-oh-eight-nine-two-two-nine-zero-three-six. So I'm getting rid of my half-police, half-fire phone number.
You already have it in your phone.
You did it, okay.
So, thank you, and thank you for changing it on the website.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counselor Plegrey.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I have a little announcement here from Mary O'Neill. She asked me if I would read this tonight, and it's my pleasure to do so. They're going to have a care for uranium Sunday. Her writing is kind of difficult to read. Sunday, June twelfth at five o'clock on the Franklin Town Common. In Clement weather, Father Brian has said that we could use the St. Mary's School, St. Mary's, and our master of ceremonies is going to be Jeff Roy, and we have. Fake leaders?
Leaders.
Fake leaders of Franklin will be involved with this, too, and. Right, this is just ours that we're doing here in Franklin, she said. Then they're also going to have one in Attleboro. Then the Boy Scouts are going to do one in Milford, and there'll be, and that's it. And she has her phone number here, five-oh-eight-two-nine-eight-seven-one-two-four, if anyone has any questions about this. But again, let me just say it's Sunday, June twelfth at five o'clock on the Franklin Town Common, okay? And they have all types of decorations that they're going to be using in awe, and it's for Franklin to show its support. Now, back, the same things that Ted said, everyone to have a safe Memorial Day, to thank all our veterans. The Senior Center is having their Veterans Breakfast on Friday, tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. You did have to let the Senior Center know that you were coming or not. And I also was at the ribbon cutting for the Food Pantry, and it was great, I'll tell you. We're very, very fortunate to have the building, and anyone they said that can help, you know, with any kind of chores, they're looking for that, too. So anything to help them save some money doing that. Have a safe weekend, y'all.
Thank you, Counselor Plegrey. Counselor Sheridan?
I just want to say happy Memorial Day.
Thank you. Counselor Frangillo?
Yeah, a lot of it's already been talked about. The Metro West Cultural Symposium was fantastic, and I learned a lot. That's already been touched upon here. I, we don't get. We don't get wins too often, or at least hear them back in terms of things that we advocated for. And I got two in the same day. One I had already talked about, which was praise for the cricket pitch that we got in. And then that same day, someone had brought up the crosswalk in front of Chestnut Ridge, getting people across and connecting that to the rest of the sidewalk network there. That got put in, and a lot of happy customers there. We still need to make sure that that's safe. But a few wins for the town, so go team. Some events, Strawberry Stroll is June 10th, 4 to 8. June 10th, 4 to 8. And Pride Day is going to be on June 26th, 12 to 4 at the Common. Happy Memorial Day, everyone. Congrats to our graduates.
Thank you, Counselor Frangello. Counselor Hamblin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair, I'd like to remind everyone that June 3rd is the first farmer's market at the Town Common, and you can get your wine there, along with a lot of other stuff. The Agriculture Commission will be there, helping people plant seeds so that you can grow your own zucchini for zucchini races, and also grow the biggest pumpkin, because at the end of the farmer's market, there will be a, in October, there will be a way-year pumpkin contest. So that will be fun. And not only is the Strawberry Stroll going to be on June 10th for the first time ever, we will have a Franklin for All booth at the Strawberry Stroll. And I want everybody to come by, see the renditions, talk about the really cool recommendations that are out there, and give us your input. So I will be there. Hopefully, other members of the steering committee will be there as well. And I'm not going to have a booth. I'm going to be at the Franklin for All booth. So that will be a lot of fun. I'd like to thank everyone for this budget cycle. That means the whole team, everybody, staff, volunteers, the finance team, AAA bond rating this year. I feel like it's like we're batting 1,000 here. Fire Class 1 ISO, police accreditation, the school department, all the stuff that's going on there. Everybody in all those departments. The FINCOM, the school committee, and my fellow counselors. This was really a wonderful budget process, and I think we all learned a lot. The recent events in the past few weeks, these horrible, horrible events that have happened around the country, has made me think a lot about my dad. And the last few weeks of his life, I sat with him all night long. And he would see things, and we would talk about things. But one of the things he talked about was that he saw these bubbles that came down from the sky. And he asked me if I saw them, and I didn't see them. And I said, well, what are they? And he goes, well, they're these bubbles, you know? You have to catch them. And I said, well, what's in the bubbles? And he said, they're messages. And I said, what kind of messages? And he said, they're messages of hope. So I hope, my message to everyone is that we find a way to make a difference and that we become courageous to fight for what's right. So that is my message of hope, and hopefully, that was the one that I tried to catch and I couldn't catch, because I didn't see them, but that's okay. So thank you, Dad. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What she said. In all honesty, mostly everything that needed to be said has been said. The only thing I want to state is that Counselor Chandler, the Betamax and the 8-track tapes are still available, if you need them for your other devices. I'm sad to hear about your.
Other words, live.
I still have my 8-tracks.
Your 8-tracks, oh, good.
Live, not memorex.
That's good. Happy Memorial Day. It's been a productive night. The only real big thank you I want to throw out to is every single person who was in the council chambers last night, as part of the departments and department heads and the staff, showed up for that very lengthy budget hearing, were very thoughtful in giving their remarks and to any questions that we had. And the one thing that really makes me happy about this budget here, about this budget season, and I really, I really hope every single counselor that's sitting here today takes one thing away from this year's budget hearings. We had no layoffs.
Excellent point.
No additions.
Okay. We had no layoffs. And I can't tell you how hard it's been in the past when we went through several budget iterations, where the hardest decisions we had to make was how many people did we have to let go? That's always one of the hardest things. This was a tremendous triumphant success for, on behalf of the departments and the town administration and us, making this all work this year. Let's just keep our fingers crossed that next year will be just as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Delarco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Counselor Jones, Glenn, you made a good point. How many times have we sat here? It wasn't even brought up this year on how many times, how many people to lay off. So that's a great feat. And I want to thank everybody for the budgets. It's the toughest thing to do all year long, and now it's over. You can breathe a little bit, and hopefully, everything goes good. But just want to say, you know, I want to give our prayers out to the people down in Texas, those poor little kids. I can't even watch TV when I see it. It's just, the country has to do something about that. I just wish the, and I know Counselor Hamblin would agree with me on this. I would love to see the Greatest Generation back, because I think they'd be able to handle it in a better way than we have been handling it. And happy Memorial Day. Just remember, the veterans that lost their lives during, that's what Memorial Day is all about. And that's the reason why we can sit here right now and talk freely is because of the veterans. So special happy Memorial Day to them.
Thank you, Counselor Delarco. Again, all of my colleagues have put out an awful lot of thank yous, but I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you and congratulations to every staffer, every employee of the Town of Franklin, municipal schools, everyone, for a great budget process. And I hope the, everybody that was here last night that sat through four hours of budget hearing, or of public hearing on the budget, I hope they can forgive me for the four hours, but thank me, because they didn't have to come back. And I apologize to my fellow counselors, because they did have to come back.
You should. Don't do it again till next year, please.
But by state law, we have to have two public hearings on the budget, and hence why we have to go through this process. Again, congratulations to the graduates of Franklin County, Norfolk County, all of these students from Franklin, or whatever schools they are graduating from. Certainly, congratulations to all of them. Happy Memorial Day to everyone. And we do have a need for executive session this evening. And I want to apologize for the, a little bit of cumbersome with tonight's executive session. We will be having two executive sessions this evening. We will, in a second, we will vote to go into the first executive session. And the second one is needed, because I need to recuse myself from that subject. So therefore, we have to have, we have to exit one and then start another. And Counselor Vice Chair Delarco will be overseeing the second executive session. So we now have a need to go into executive session for exemption number three, which is collective bargaining, all-town unions, to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may be detrimental, have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, which I do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to go into collective bargaining for the purposes of all-town unions to discuss strategy. With respect to collective bargaining, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body, the public body, and the chair so declares.
Second.
In return to open session afterwards.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote. Clerk will call the vote.
Cormier-Ledger.
Yes.
Sheridan.
Yes.
Chandler.
Yes.
Frangello.
Yes.
Plegory.
Yes.
Hamblin.
Yes.
Jones, yes, vice chair.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
9-0, sir.
Motion carries. Thank you, one and all, this evening.